Good evening. Welcome to Whitehall City Council Meeting, January 16, 2024. If you please rise for a moment of silence and place the flag to the leeches. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Al, would you have a roll?
Harcar.
Here.
Dixon.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck. Smith.
Present.
President Potter.
President Protam, I would like to make a motion to excuse the absent members.
Second.
Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Now move to approval of minutes.
President Protam.
January 2, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, January 9, 2024 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
President Protam, I make a motion to approve the minutes, January 2nd and January 9th.
I'll second.
Ms. Al, would you please call the roll?
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
We now move to our first opportunity to poll the public. If anyone wishes to speak, come forward. You have three minutes and state your name and address, please.
My name's Maureen Havens. I'm representing my parents. My mother is here tonight also. 878 Fairway Boulevard.
Thank you.
Listening to this discussion, Mr. Mayor, I would, no one would be for racism. And I would suggest that the packed meetings, both here and the Planning Commission, would dispel any notion of racism because all shapes, sizes, colors were here objecting to the Fairway Cliffs development. So I don't put that aside lightly, but given that evidence, I would put it aside. Now, you said this proposal for Fairway Cliffs would be a problem if they go back to the old zoning. And I'm suggesting it's already a problem because the people were not informed or given no proper notification of the rezoning. So you've got here a property where now there are two homes. The density has increased so much that now they are proposing to put 46 to 50 homes where two homes now stand, and yet none of the neighbors were notified? I have asked for the newspaper of circulation required by the Ohio Code and have not received that information. I don't know that it was in a newspaper. I was told at the early meeting it was on the website of the city, which is an undue burden on any citizen to go each week to the, to the website in case they might be changing the zoning. The people who have, are impacted by such an increase in density and a change in zoning, whose property values are impacted by this change, should be notified. And they should be notified personally. You saw the packed meeting. All of those people had an impact, were impacted by this. They should have all been notified. So we've all seen the news, the negative news about the city of Whitehall Schools and their failure to give notice. And they voted to rescind their decision that was done without due notice. And I would like to see the city council, now there's one way of doing it, what Mr. Dixon has proposed, remedy the situation that occurred when the public was not notified of the zoning changes that had an impact on them, on their area, on their property values. We got, that goes back to before the Fairway Cliffs proposal. So the Fairway Cliffs proposal may come before Mr. Dixon's change back, but the lack of notification came before the Fairway Cliffs proposal. So this is a way to remedy that situation. And the situation with the school board should give this council pause because the same lack of proper notification to the public occurred regarding those zoning changes.
Just about time, I'll read.
Yep. And I thank you for listening. And Mr. Dixon, I thank you for the courage to bring this before council and for listening to the public. Thank you.
Anyone else who should speak? Name and address, sir?
James Williams. I'm representing my parents who live at 826 Fairway Boulevard. One of the things that we come to believe through this process is that the zoning, the process of zoning, the law's importance in zoning, okay, also protect current homeowners and landowners. And all we're trying to do is make sure that nobody gets an unfair shake of the table. I believe, and a lot of other people believe, we made our presence known that we think this development is going to negatively impact the values of Fairway Boulevard. And we believe that the zoning ordinances are written so that everyone is protected, not one over the other, okay? Have anyone? I think that's all we're trying to ask for, is for that consideration to be made. And that's why I support what Mr. Dixon has proposed and be more happy to talk with anyone about it at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Earl Robinson, 5199 DeRout. And I have a couple of thoughts relative to discussions that were held on the 9th of January in the committee meeting there. Because council was discussing changing some of the policies and procedures for how they interacted with the public and how poll public was to be handled. So I wanted to raise a couple of thoughts and concerns so that you can think that through a little bit more precisely. You know, in my view, a lot of the discussion demonstrated sort of a, a lack of context and some imprecision because there was some discussion about the purpose of poll public. And in my view, poll public is designed to see that there's open government and ability for public feedback to the council that's recorded in the public record based on the information that's available. And the real argument, I think, was about how to efficiently and effectively run a limited time meeting because you've got very limited time in an evening. Basically start at seven and you want to get out before midnight. So one of the issues is how do you provide that feedback to the council in an effective way? You know, there's also, and, and one of the things I want to point out there is poll public can be handled a lot of ways. One of the things that you've brought up is that you've been taking poll public comments through email through the period of COVID. And it seems to me that maintaining that process where people can post to the public record their concerns and arguments for and against things that are before the council, that that's a good way to do it because it's a one-way communication. One other thing that came clear to me, having joined a council meeting in November where there was a lot of concerns about Fairway Cliffs, for example, was that people didn't understand that in a council meeting, it's a place for a person to make a statement, provide comments or arguments for and against things, but it's not a dialogue. It's not here to potentially slow you down as much as provide you food for thought. So it seems to me that you could continue to do that and it would have value. Now, there was some concern about people maybe trolling the city or using AI and things like that, but there's ways to deal with that. For example, you could have people register in order to post comments to poll public. And you could choose to make those part of the record without having them read during the meeting. But the key issue is that people want you to see it before you take a vote. So depending on your structure, you can ponder that a little bit. The other thing is, it's important, I think, that poll public is included and kept because it's a place where interested parties can make it a public record. If somebody sends an email to a council member, yeah, that's sort of a public record, but not everybody has direct access to it. And one of the points that was made was sometimes this is people's way to show their actual commitment and emotional support for an issue. So it seems to me that you could size limit online posts, just like you time limit discussions up here. One of the significant, significant issues that also came up was people's ability to read or absorb and review these things during the meeting. And one of the nice things, if it's part of the official record, you can look at it later and come back to it, especially if they come up during the first or second reading. The other thing is you never have to guarantee that all parties today get to speak in a session like this. You just never had an overload, except at that meeting that was in November where there were more people than could possibly speak in the time. So, you know, if, if that's a concern, you should think about that with the fact that, and if it becomes a problem, you can deal with it, but up until that time, you should let it go, I think. So to close it up, it's my feeling that, you know, this is a way for the community to provide you with essential information. And the more you allow that, the more success we're going to have in the transparency of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Speaker? Seeing that one, we will move to our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet on Tuesday. We have legislation. We will meet again. Our minutes on file, we will meet again next Tuesday.
Thank you. Communications, uh, communications, Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harcar.
Yes, we have no legis, we did meet last week. We have no pending legislation. Did get to attend the Martin Luther King Breakfast. That was really a great event. So congratulations for, I believe it was Councilmember Elmore and Mayor Vivens who worked to put that together. And anyone else, sorry, I don't know who worked, what yet, but that's all that we had.
Thank you. Communication Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protam. Standards and Enforcement also met last week. We have ordinance 001, 2023 on the agenda for this evening. The Planning Commission meeting has been postponed to March 5th. Let me know, check that. Yes, March 5th. Our minutes on file, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Protam Morrison. Economic Development met last week. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight. We will meet next week sometime after 6:30 in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Minutes on file, and we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30. Public Safety also met last week. With minutes on file, and we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30. Park and Recreation, Chairperson Heck. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Parks and Rec met last week. Our minutes on file, we do have a resolution. And also our commission, Wrexham Park, met regarding commissions. And we will have a motion later. Our minutes on file, we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. We now move to officials' report, and we start with Mayor Vivens.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Members of council and everyone that's here tonight, thank you so much for coming. Before I get into what has been going on in the mayor's office, there's one stanza in a poem that I love that says, "If you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken twisted." And let me speak this very clearly. The truth that I spoke tonight was not accusing anyone from Fairway, not even you, Councilmember Dixon, in proffering the legislation tonight as being racist. I do not consider any of you to be racist. Do I believe that there are racist systems and that there are racist structures that exist, that are present and that are operational in our government and in our society today? Absolutely. In fact, those racist systems are the reasons why none of the restrictive covenants on Fairway are legal right now because they were outlawed. What I did in this council tonight was I gave Councilwoman Amy Harcar a historical perspective for why we came to the zoning changes that we came to today. Residential zoning, while not racist on its face, there is data to support that it has disparate impact on suspect classes. That is it. It was in the blueprint. I merely gave a historical context for why the previous administration chose to move the city in the direction of its new zoning classifications. But hear me very clearly. I have not accused, nor will I say, that this legislation was proffered based upon a racist ideology. And I will not let anyone characterize it that way because that was not what I said. That was not my intent. That was not my heart. I was merely giving a historical context. Fair? You don't have to answer, but it is in the record. Next, I would like to thank Councilwoman Amy Harcar, Councilwoman Lori Elmore, Councilwoman Joanna Heck, and Councilwoman Amy Smith for being at the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Breakfast yesterday. Let me tell you, people, that was the most amazing scholarship breakfast that we've had in the city of Whitehall to date. It was our fifth annual scholarship breakfast. And we had 10 applicants from the city of Whitehall, city schools, submit resumes, or submit essays for this scholarship. And hear me, this is just an amazing statistic. The average GPA of the 10 students was a 4.0. Of all the students. It was incredible. Every last one of them are college-bound. One of the, one of the kids is going to USC on potentially, I, I said, he said he's choosing, but he's going to USC on a track scholarship. It's a, the, our kids in our city are amazing and phenomenal, and we have to invest in them. And we have to make sure that we put every effort to make sure that they have every opportunity available for them, not only in the city of Whitehall, but for whatever great big life that they choose to live. I was just moved. It was an amazing experience. That's it for that. As you've come into council, next point, as you've come into the city, you'll, you'll see some changes. One of the changes that I made, and I want to make this very clear, is I moved the mayor's photographs from City Hall. Now, here's why. I've been coming in this, through the city eight years as city attorney, and the thing that I hated the most was the correlation of our mayors to the restroom. You see them when you go in and you see them when you come out. And I thought there could have been a better way to display our mayors and display the integrity and display the dignity of these individuals that were just phenomenal leaders of our city. And when I campaigned, and I took flak for, for campaigning, but I campaigned because I believed that every, that I needed to earn every vote. Even though I was running unopposed, I did not feel that I was unopposed because I wanted every single vote. And while I was out campaigning, because of who I am ethnically, it was phenomenal how many people would say and start talking to me about the history of Whitehall and how Whitehall has changed. And I was evidence of that change and I embraced that change. And I started leaning into those stories and I had a discussion with a longstanding Whitehall resident about, wouldn't it be amazing to do a Whitehall Founder's Day? The thing I'll never forget about Whitehall and the founding of it is that it was, the charter at least was founded November the 8th, 1966. And the reason why I remember that is because it's the day before my beautiful wife's birthday. And I will never forget that November the 8th, 1966, the charter was founded for the city of Whitehall, but we go back before then to 1947. But the history is what I'm talking about. And therefore, what I am proposing and what I'm looking forward to get if council approves legislation tonight to bring on and get me fully staffed, is the creation of Whitehall's first Founder's Day in the city of Whitehall, where we actually lean into our rich history. We lean into our diversity. We lean into the champions that were safeguarding how we got here today in 2024 and actually visit the historical society and have a nice venue that is respectable. So that's in the works, that's coming. Since February is on the horizon, and I've spoken with at least a few people about, I would love in the month of February, and this is going to come out, to honor the longest married couples in the city of Whitehall for Valentine's Day. So check your emails, check your notices. I would like to know who are the longest married couples in the city of Whitehall because on Valentine's Day, you're going to get your flowers, you're going to get your recognition. And if we really make it special, we might just try to do some weddings on that day and kind of slingshot it into the oldest couples meet the newest couples. And that would just be a fantastic day.
How about the couples that are kind of in the middle?
Hey, hey, whatever it takes, whatever it takes. With February being Valentine's Day, remember that is the horizon and we will be celebrating Black History Month during the month of February. And there are things that are, that are coming in that. And then certainly last but not least, Channel 4 put out notices of warming centers in throughout central Ohio. And if you have a, unfortunately, we don't have any of those warming centers in the city of Whitehall, but I recommend that you go to NBC4 and look at warming centers open across Columbus. And if you know anyone that is affected or impacted with homelessness or needing some type of care as it relates to that, there are several warming centers throughout Franklin County in central Ohio that they do not need to suffer through this inclement weather. And thank you, Mr. President Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next with the city attorney, Mr. McAdiebus.
Thank you. Just a quick report tonight, as everybody knows, at the end of, well, maybe not everybody knows because we do have new council members, but at the end of last year, our domestic violence victim advocate moved into a new role in, as our clerk of courts for mayor's court. Since then, the office staff has been kicking it into high gear, filling in for that role because even before Marcy's Law was codified, the office had, had a position that we were going to, to make sure victims receive services they need. It's because it's more than just making sure they show up for court or are aware of it. Sometimes victims need safety planning, they need assistance getting to court. And, and again, sometimes not just safety plan, but then they need to know and help getting to someplace safe right now. And without our victim advocate, the office staff has been kicking in. We've been sharing the phone. Some of the prosecutors take it over the weekends to answer texts from, from victims. And then throughout the week, the paralegal Rachel and Julie have been answering those throughout the week. The good news is, is I've had over, I don't even know if it's 0.40 or more, applications for that position. There are so many, I haven't been able to review the recent batch. We have begun interviews in the caliber of people that want to come and work in the Whitehall City Attorney's Office as our victim advocate. I, if my next interviews or anything like the first ones we've had, it's going to be a very, very tough choice. So with that, hopefully, we'll be concluding interviews. And I don't know, well, because we have an extra Tuesday this month, so hopefully by the next council meeting, I'll be able to announce that we have made a selection and are back with a, with a full-time victim advocate. And that's all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is City Auditor, Mr. Quetzal, who's not here. Next, we have Director of Public Services, Casey.
Thank you, President Protam. This is my first meeting officially, so thank you all for welcoming me. I'm looking forward to many, many more. I do have two pieces of legislation that I would appreciate a positive vote for. Beyond that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van Gregg is not present. Next, we have Treasurer, Mr. Alexander. He sent in an email saying he would not be available this evening as well. So then, the following offices report, the following office reports have been filed in the city council office since the last meeting. The Auditor's Expense Report for December 2023, the Auditor's Bank Report for December 2023, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Reports for December 2023, the Auditor's Revenue Reports for December 2023. Next, we have Communications Petitions and Claims. There have been no communications petitions and claims filed in the council office since the last meeting. Next, we will have verification of copies. Ms. Al, please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Next, we have Ms. Elmore.
President Protam, I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointments of Chris Bollock and Michelle Reed to the Park and Recreation Commission for the 2024-2026 term.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Al, could you please co-roll?
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. We now move to third reading in the legislation. There's no legislation for third reading. We move on to second reading. We have ordinance 1, 2024. This legislation would need to be tabled until 3/5/24 for public hearing. Move to March 5, 2024. Amending the zoning map attached to Charter 1104.01 of the 2023 codified ordinance of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amending, subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under Section 1104.03H to permit by-and-by auto cell LLC company to operate a vehicle and large equipment repair business in the Main Street District.
Mr. President Protam, I would like to put in a motion to table ordinance 001, 2024.
Second.
Ms. Al, please co-roll.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to Resolution 1, 2024. This is being read by title only. Authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept assistance from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources via Ohio's Urban Forest Grant Program. That is being read by title only. We will now move on to second, or first readings. The first reading, we have ordinance 2, 2024. Approve, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $8,218.20 from the unappropriated monies in Police Department Grant Fund 212, to the 212.000.50 PD Grant Fund Cadet Internship Program Expense Account and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 2, 2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 2, 2024 is then introduced by Ms. Elmore and seconded by Ms. Harcar. Will you please? For suspending of the rule. Will you please for suspending the rules? Could you please call the roll?
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Ms. Harcar. Please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance two two twenty twenty twenty-four has been adopted. We will move to ordinance three twenty twenty-four. This is authorizing exemptions of one sixty-one point oh nine A vacation and sick leave credit over carryover, one sixty-one point oh nine eight, for the purpose of employing a highly qualified employee to the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
President Pro Tem, I move to introduce ordinance three two thousand twenty-four and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance three twenty twenty-four has been introduced by Ms. Elmore and seconded by Mr. Dixon for suspension of the rules. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance three twenty twenty-four has been moved by Ms. Elmore and seconded by Mr. Dixon for the adoption. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move to ordinance four twenty twenty-four, authorize exemption of one sixty-one point oh nine A vacation and sick leave credit carryover, one sixty-one point oh nine eight, for the purpose of employing a highly qualified employee to the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance four two thousand twenty-four and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance four twenty twenty-four has been introduced by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Dixon for suspension of all rules. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Ordinance two four twenty twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Ms. Elmore and seconded by Mr. Dixon. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
We now come to ordinance five twenty twenty-four, it's listed title only, refer to Planning Commission for two one twenty twenty-four. Amend section eleven oh three point oh two C building placement, amending the zoning map attached to the to chart attached to Charter eleven oh four point oh one of the two thousand and twenty-three codified ordinance of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, and changing the zoning on property located on Fairway Boulevard, Bollard, partials, partial numbers, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven seven four, oh nine oh dash oh oh one eight one two, oh nine oh dash oh oh one eight nine one, pardon, eight one nine, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven seven five, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven seven six, oh nine oh dash oh oh one oh one oh, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven seven seven, oh nine oh dash one seven three five, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven seven eight, oh nine oh dash oh oh six seven five two, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven eight oh, oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven eight one, and oh nine oh dash oh oh one seven eight two, from S T U R to residential estate district.
President Pro Tem, I'll move to table one more discussion in committee.
Second.
We have a move to table ordinance oh oh five twenty twenty-four by Ms. Elmore and a second by Ms. Harcar. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance oh five twenty twenty-four has been tabled. Did I say it right? Oh five twenty twenty-four, okay. We'll now move to ordinance six twenty twenty-four. This is Committee of the Whole, first reading, authorizing and approving the amendment of one sixty-one point three seven A and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance zero zero six twenty twenty-four and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
We have ordinance zero zero six twenty twenty-four. Ms. Smith has moved to suspend the rules, and Ms. Elmore has seconded it. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
We have ordinance six twenty twenty-four, move for adoption by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion on this? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution oh two twenty twenty-four. This is being read by title only. A, excuse me, a resolution to adopt the Solid Waste Management Plan for the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio and declaring an emergency. That is all of the ordinances and resolutions on the agenda tonight. We can now go to the second poll public. If anyone wishes to speak, you may come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes on a separate subject.
I'm Merrill Robinson, fifty-one, ninety, and Geral. And this is also related to the ninth, but it's a different subject. It was brought up during the morning. And basically, what I want to talk about is the issue about recording committee meetings and providing information via the Internet to the rest of the community. There seemed to be some disagreement over the definition of community involvement, particularly involving electronic access to city activities. Some seem to feel that physical presence indicated commitment should be a requirement to participate. Others expressed a concern over Internet trolls or disruptive persons that might try to do something electronically if you had other forums or email processes. And so other concerns obviously come from our national experience that shows most spontaneous text communication is not a good avenue for dialogue. It's basically statements, arguments, and position statements. But one of the things that I'm very concerned about is we need to be somewhat honest on the limitations of our current system of inclusion, because physical attendance minimizes the expression of people who are poor or time pressed, including those with medical, child, or elder care issues. So having this available electronically online has a real value in terms of seeing that more citizens get to see what's going on and can provide you feedback through either an electronic poll public or by physically coming to a regular council meeting, because we're talking about committee meetings for the most part. None of these people are no less a resident than somebody who physically shows up, so there's a real value in hearing from them. Now, you have some concerns, I'm sure, about the mechanisms for that, and see that it's a manageable feed of information, but that's a secondary issue, I think. The method by itself doesn't promote the best discussion, but it gives you more information and a chance to to make things public to other members of the community, where council people can talk with people either by email or physically on site. You know, it's generally recognized that small group events seems to be the best way to have dialogue with individual voters and residents, but the challenge of that is time, because you all mostly are part-time. So it's something to think about for the future if you want to have some kind of a social event, say at the library or whatever, where you might be able to get other kinds of feedback, because there you can have a discussion rather than have people make position papers and give you, you know, just their argument and their emotional statement that I like or don't like what you're doing. So in my view, what we should be exploring, even with our limited budget, is having more of this stuff available online and to see that we have an electronic record, because I realize a lot of that becomes official record of the city. And, you know, there's some discussion about cost there, and I'm really hard-pressed to think that that's a huge factor in the budget, and I know they were going to do some research on that, so that's still true pending. So in my view, we need to try to be as accessible as possible, because the best government is transparent as possible. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Maureen Hayes, representing my parents, Dawn and Nancy Kelly, eight seven eight Fairway Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, I do want to go on record, I didn't mean to imply that you were saying that was racism. I jumped to the to the packed meetings and the diversity of those groups because it was one of the finer moments for me, that whole process was the sense of community among a lot of diverse people. So I congratulate you on your historic election as mayor of Whitehall. I grew up in Whitehall in the sixties and early seventies, and trust me, it is historical. So I hope that your leadership will be historical too, and that you can lead Whitehall through growing pains and all that's ahead. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I enjoy being in twenty-nine eighty-five Dole Avenue. Just really quick, I know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned this, but I wanted to commend those council members that attended the scholarship breakfast yesterday. Many of you know that the mayor started that with his own funds, continues to fund that with his own funds. And I just wanted to, if we could, go on record really quick for those who would like to give in the community for scholarships for our kids in this community to have opportunities, whether it be college, trades, or whatever, so that they can have access to sustainable lives, that we can post, where folks can give, if they would like to give a scholarship or monies to a child that is looking post-high school, that would be fantastic. But you all should be really proud, this community should be proud, and I'm going to say it again, the average GPA for those kids was four point two. That's to be commendable in this community. I go into the JVC, I oversee all the human service agencies in this county, and I see a lot of kids who struggle, and when people invest in them, they have a better future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynette Boyer, and I live at seven ninety-one Ross Road. Congratulations. I missed, like, I was like in the land of like recovering from Christmas, and I was like, wait a minute, they have the inauguration or what? Okay, so I'm sorry, I missed it. Congratulations. I would like to express concern. I live on Ross Road, I'm not actually part of the Fairway community, but as a member of this community and as a general passerby before I ever lived and purchased a home here, I really have an interest in seeing the integrity of the Fairway area be maintained. I don't necessarily believe that it needs to be maintained as it currently is, but I just want to go on record as saying I'm really supportive of some level of protection to that area, because it's such a gem and such a beautiful area. And, I mean, one of the things that I, I had a choice to live here or Reynoldsburg, and I chose here, and I I would do it again, but I think one of the beautiful things about Whitehall is the range of humanity that lives here. That's really cool, and I don't want to see that go away. And I don't want to see us be elitist and protect land over providing housing, but I would like to see there be some protections to the amount of parcels and the amount of homes and the types of homes that can be in that area. It's not in my budget to live over that way, but I think it brings the kind of people who would not otherwise come to this area, and so I would like to say that. I would also like to see there be a definition for the word reasonable when it comes to proper notice to citizens for official city business. Specifically speaking, this young lady was tasked with giving notice concerning the planning committee meeting, and as far as I can tell, there's no definition. The word is called reasonable. And so unfortunately for her, what she thought was reasonable was not considered reasonable by citizens, and I think it's not, it's not a good position for any city official or staff person to be in, to have to make that call. So it would be nice to see there be a definition put into our official law, so that someone can just comply with the law instead of being the choice-maker in that situation, because what you guys think, you know, on any day is reasonable, what I think, they're going to, they're going to vary. So I just didn't feel like that was a fair situation for the citizens or for, I'm sorry, I don't know. That's okay. But I thought that was not a good position. I think we can do better here. And I think that the amount of involvement that Whitehall would like to see would would call for an extension of maybe a week or two for things like that. So thank you for listening, Merry Christmas and a happy weekend.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Graham, six four four Greenwood Road, Whitehall, Ohio, Columbus, whatever you want to call it. You know, there's been a lot of talk about communication, and there's definitely a lack of communication. Some people have the Internet, some people don't. Some people have cell phones, some people still have a wired telephone. What it all boils down to is how people get their information. Now, personally myself, I think one good way to do it would be to have a public notice somewhere, something I have talked about for twenty years, a sign, my gosh, how revolutionary, a lit-up sign out in front of City Hall that says, "Council meeting tonight, important discussion regarding yada, yada, yada." I know that it costs money, but I think in the long run, if you communicate to people in every single way you can, such as a sign, which I have talked about for twenty years, they have them out in Gehanna, they have one in front of the schools. Come on, we got more money than the schools do. Electric is right here in this basement. You can dig a hole out there, you can get somebody to come and put up a sign. I know it costs money, but I think in the long run, you're going to save a lot of problems. People will know what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, we will move to Community Date Board. Ms. Harcar?
Community events are coming up, like we said, with the Martin Luther King event. They also just recently had, the Lending Day is coming up, and the Senior Day at the YMCA will be here as well, or actually, did that?
That's January twenty-fifth.
Yeah, January twenty-fifth, thank you. That is all that I have at this point.
March thirty-first softball, baseball, and tee ball, sign-ups, also soccer. March thirty-first.
Mr. Dixon? You got nothing? You're done? Ms. Smith?
For Community Date Board, I have nothing.
I have nothing. Okay, guess it's my turn. I have nothing for the Community Date Board. I would just like to thank everybody for their patience. This is my first time sitting in this Pro Tem, and mistakes were made, hopefully I'll get better one day. Ms. Thomas? Ms. Thomas, good to see you here, first time as well.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else?
Poll council.
Poll council.
I missed that.
Maybe. We just reminded you.
See?
You wanted to make sure we were paying attention.
That's right, that's right.
Poll council. Ms. Harkard?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank you, Mayor Vivins, for the historical context. Um, as a new council member, this is a lot of stuff for me to consider. I want to do a good job with this. I know that racism can exist when even there's not a racist person there because of how systems are set up. So, um, I appreciate what you had to say and sharing that with me. I want to do a good job on this. I want to be able to look at everything that's there and all of the information. Uh, so letting me have a little bit more time on that is helpful. Um, I will second what Ms. Vivins said about the fantastic students at the breakfast. I was so impressed. I was like going home and like, no, she wants to be an OBGYN and this. I, I was just, I was so really impressed with the students that were there. Um, not to single out the, the one person there's, every one of them had really good goals, um, and dreams. And so it was great to see them there, but also a room full of people there to support them and cheer them on. Um, so I'm just really excited about that. I can't wait for next year's event. So, um, that's really all that I have. I just want to thank everybody for being here, for speaking. I appreciate what you had to say, um, for anybody that is home watching, um, you know, just appreciate everybody tuning in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Pro Temp, Allison. Couple things. Thank you, uh, everyone for, uh, watching from home on Facebook, et cetera, and thank all of those who came in this super frigid weather to come out and be a part of this, uh, this meeting. I thank you very much for that. Um, a couple things. Is, regarding, uh, five, 2024, I have things to say, but I will save those for the committee meeting next week. I think I've said plenty enough tonight. Um, uh, Ms. Haven, thank you very much for coming in and sharing your comments. Ms. Kel, Mrs. Kelly, who I've never met, uh, thank you for coming in. I, I've never, we've never met, but that's very, uh, uh, you've got a lot of gusto to come out in this weather tonight for this meeting. I appreciate it. Uh, as well, James Williams, thank you very much for those considerations. Uh, they will certainly be taken into consideration. Uh, and, uh, I'm sorry, James Williams here, yes. I'm just looking over at Mr. Robinson. Thank you very much. And, uh, Mr. Robinson, thank you for those, uh, those considerations. Um, I'd like to welcome, uh, our Director of Public Service, Casey Thomas, and not just to her role as such, but to her first meeting. Uh, best wishes and good luck to you on all of that. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Chris Bolick and Michelle Reed on their appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, I'd like to thank Larry Morrison for stepping up and, uh, being the President Pro Temp. I think he did a fine job there. Uh, Ms. Vivins, thank you very much for coming in. Uh, I was one of those that did not attend the, uh, the breakfast. And there were several reasons for that. I didn't feel the need to speak on them, but, uh, I feel sort of like I was, you know, like I didn't go and I'm not a good person if I didn't. I wish those kids well, okay? But there were legitimate reasons that I couldn't come. So my apologies for that, and I wish those students well. Um, Mr. Graham, you know for years, and when you were up here on this dais, that I was fighting for more and more communication. So I am totally valid, or totally, uh, in line with what you're saying. And I think all recommendations and suggestions should certainly be taken into account and given their due consideration. I think that's a great idea, as I have in the past. That may be all I have. Thank you all very much for coming in.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, President Pro Temp. Uh, thank you for those that have taken the time out to, um, observe and, and watch our meeting through Facebook Live. Also thank you for those who are out here and, uh, attended the meeting and had the courage to come up and speak during poll public. Your recommendations and the things that you said have not gone on deaf to your ears. I believe that, um, all input will be considered, um, as it always is. Um, also would like to, um, thank, um, Superintendent Cherie Wells for encouraging our children to submit essays. Uh, this is the fifth year, and I remember we, it was like pulling teeth to get students to, to, uh, write essays. But now we have several that have written essays, and now we're up to 10. And that is, speaks volumes to the participation. And, um, just the voices that, that our, our kids have. Our greatest asset are our children, and they are the future. And there's still opportunity to give, uh, to the scholarship fund. Um, and I want to say, um, something else just about, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King and what he, what he stood for is not just a dreamer. That's just a little part, a real minute part of what it is that his speech was really about. It was a fight for freedom. It was a, it was his voice. It was making sure your voice is heard, um, no matter what the situation. And speaking, uh, truth to power and, and correcting those who tarnish your name and speak all ill manners against you and to come up against those things that just are not right and systemic racism. Um, and so disparate treatment. And those are things that I have fought for in my career for over 30 years. I represented a, uh, largest public employees' union in the state of Ohio. And it's always been about your, your, your vote, your voice, your voice, your vote. So without your voice, you have nothing. So thank you for those people that have, have come up and spoke and, um, and even those people that, that, uh, that email. Um, also want to welcome Representative Humphrey. Um, you are always present, our state representative is always present. Um, and, and it is encouraging because we have a state rep that comes out and not just looks on the sideline and comes out when it's time to vote, but you are a participant in this Whitehall community. So thank you very much. Um, and with that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Pro Temp. Um, thank you for those here this evening and for those watching at home. Um, the Martin Luther King Breakfast was great. Um, I think it just goes to show, I mean, first of all, those kids were in so many clubs. I don't know why they're so polite. Um, but I think it shows that at Whitehall City Schools, like, people say a lot of different things, but if you want it, you can find it there. There is opportunity for success, and those kids were an example of that. But you've got to be willing to work for it. Um, congrats to Director of Public Service, Casey Thomas. Um, welcome. I'm glad we were able to, um, bring you to that position and keep all of the knowledge you amassed over the years and to keep that department running smoothly. Um, I believe that's all I have. I won't repeat what is already been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President Pro Temp, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
President Pro Temp needs to speak.
He already did.
Yeah, but I made a mistake.
My fault.
And you said it's okay.
I thought you already did your part.
I will not repeat a whole bunch of stuff. I just want to thank you all for attending, coming out into this cold weather. Thank those watching online and thank the administration and council for, and especially Julie for tolerating me for this meeting. If there's nothing else?
Mr. President Pro Temp, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You second?
So that was the perfect time.
It's on me.
Harkard?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:00 P.M.